Minutes of the meeting are being recorded, therefore anyone wishing to conduct business will be asked to come to the microphone, provide their name, address, present their request, or concerns, and answer any questions of the Planning Commission. Groups are requested to select a spokesperson to express the group's concerns, because each side will be allowed ten minutes to speak. Plats, rezonings, revised master plans, and street renaming require a public hearing, after which the Planning Commission will deliberate and render its decision. The passage of any motion shall require the affirmative vote of a simple majority of the members of the commission who are present and eligible to vote. In the case of a tie in votes on any proposal, the proposal fails. Recusals and abs- abs- people that abstain are not counted as a vote. Development plans require a public hearing to provide the public an opportunity to express opinions. However, a vote by the Planning Commission shall not be taken. Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. If a motion to deny a request is made, a reason must be given. Members of the Planning Commission: Leslie Stone, Ann Clemmons, Frank Cook, Buddy Hardwick, Reggie Dunn, Cruz Reeves, and James Reed. Staff members Warren Adams, Tanya Ingram, Robert Smith, and Carol Anne Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December 12, 2024 meeting?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Item number one presented by Professional Engineering Consultants, representing Alabama Community College System, Trinum State Community College, requests final approval of Trinum Executive Park, plat number one, located on the southwest corner of Executive Park Drive and Eastern Boulevard, in a B3 commercial and O1 office zoning districts.
I'm Steve Green with Professional Engineering Consultants, representing Alabama Community College System. The Trinum State Community College is renovating the Blunt International Office Facility, and this property consists of three planted lots and one unplanted parcel. The three planted lots are on separate plats, and they wish to plant the entire property on one plat.
Any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Please come forward and use the microphone, please. Name and address. Thank you.
Name is Latrico Thompson. We're owners of the building across from the plot that's under question, and we're wondering why. What's the purpose of combining them, certainly and separately?
Okay, like I said, the Alabama Community College System has purchased the old Blunt International Office Complex, and that property out there consists of three separate parcels, planted parcels, and one unplanted. And in the renovation, we're having to cross the property lines of the different lots, and it's better, it's easier to plant the property in one lot and not have to deal with the three separate parcels.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you. Item number two presented by Recon Builders presenting, representing the same, public hearing for a development plan for a new construction to be located at 6001 Troy Highway in a B3 commercial zoning district. Any questions from the Planning Commission? A public hearing?
Tanya.
Please.
Okay.
Just one second.
Tom? So Warren, what happens?
Um, we have added the requirement that the applicant be in attendance. However, this one had been sent out prior to that being done, so that requirement was not on there.
It's going to be our call.
You cannot make any determination on it. We are requiring the applicants to be here. Let me just check with legal. We recently added to the application forms that for development plans, the applicant must be present for it to move forward, to address any comments. This particular application was submitted prior to that notification being added to the application form. Can staff determine that this should be carried over to the next
Staff can make that choice, but whatever was in place at the time they submitted the application is what has to be followed. So if staff made a determination previously when the applicant wasn't here, they can vote on it.
Yeah, well, there's no vote on this. It is purely public comment.
Correct. I mean, if there's people here to talk about it, you can have the public hearing.
Would you, would the chair like to check if there's anyone here that wishes to comment on it, or would you prefer if staff just delete this item to the next meeting?
Just push it to the next meeting, Warren. Item number three presented by Onsites, excuse me, Onsite Civil Group, representing Summerlin Automotive Group, public hearing for a development plan for a new structure to be located at 911 Eastern Boulevard in a B2 commercial and B5 commercial zoning district.
My name is Jason Stow with Onsite Civil, and we are the civil engineers here representing Summerlin. We are proposing a service building in the rear parking lot back behind the main showroom.
Move that mic over and speak into it.
Sorry.
Speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. Existing car dealership, we are proposing a service center in the back lot, back behind the building. They're looking for more room to service vehicles.
Any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions concerned from the audience?
Which dealership is this? Which dealership is this?
Uh, this is the Lexus.
There are no further questions. A public hearing's been held. Thank you. Item number four presented by Alabama State Port Authority, representing Montgomery Express, public hearing for a development plan for a new intermodal facility to be located on the west side of Mobile Highway, across from Green Leaf Drive, in a M1 light industrial
Matt Stipula, representing the Alabama State Port Authority. This project is proposing is a new intermodal facility and siding track. The siding track is in conjunction with CSX, and we run from Wadston Road to Selma Highway about three miles. And then the northern mile of that, near Selma Highway, will be developed into an intermodal facility to bring containers directly from the port of Mobile into Montgomery, so they wouldn't be coming over truck. This facility is intended to be used only for international containers. It will have tracks for loading and unloading, and storage of containers as well.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Any question or concerns from the audience? Go ahead, sir. Come on. Don't forget name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Michael Carks. I'm 5412 Conne Circle. This, we have the members of residents of South Lawn. Have no objection to a port being built across the railroad track, but they propose bringing the entrance up to Green Leaf, which is going to be very congested. We've already discussed this with ALDOT. We've discussed it with the Port Authority. The only objection we have is don't bring the entrance up to the Green Leaf entrance, because you're talking about a residential area. You're talking about there are three churches in that area. There are two schools. And you're talking about massive congestion with probably about, estimation about fifty-four to fifty-five tractor trailers going in and out from 6:00 a.m. to somewhere around 6:00 p.m. every day, carrying, carrying cargo. And the roads, unless ALDOT does something about the, you know, the expansion of the highway, you know, it'll be a massive congestion for the residents of South Lawn, all of the residents, including English Village. As I say, we have petitioned them last year. We sent over three or 400 names to the Port Authority of Mobile. They came out. We talked with them about this. And again, I say, we don't have any objection against about the Port Authority. We have, they're building this port, but we want them to move the entrance down past South Lawn Baptist Church, down near Dollar General's entrance to the highway, so that the tractor trailer is going to cause massive congestion. Now, you think the congestion is bad. Now, when they have an accident on I-65, they rob all the traffic up through our residential area. It's horrible at times, trying to make it home, going both ways, going south and north on I-65. So the only objection that the South Lawn residents have is that it should not come up to that Green Leaf entrance, which is the main, one of the main entrances into our neighborhood. It's going to cause massive problems. If you've been in that area, you know the South Lawn middle school sits right there, next to the highway, right in the corner there. And then we have the elementary school, and then we have the South Lawn Baptist Church. We have Jehovah Witness Hall. We have another church. And then we have a very narrow road to travel. So that's the objection that we have. Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions from the Planning Commission? Or the audience?
I'd like to make a statement, Mr. Chair, and that's for the residents of South Lawn. I know when we first approved this project, that we cued, we disqualified, so that they cannot put the entrance and exit directly in front of Green Leaf. And also, they cannot have any tractor trailers go down Burnside, Burnsdale Drive. I'm almost certain that we cued that. So when they do start that project, you guys know that you can always petition the city and have those, to pull those records, because it has been cued that they cannot have the entrance and exit right there at y'all entrance to y'all neighborhood. So y'all just keep that aware in mind as that project progresses.
All right. Public hearing's been held. Thank you.
He has a question.
Did you have a question? Yes, I want to state, we did look at alternate entrance locations, and this, we worked with ALDOT and got the traffic study approved. This wants, we wanted this to be a signalized intersection. ALDOT does too, just with the trucks coming in and out. And we can't, if we go further south, we don't have enough spacing from the Dollar General entrance. So this existing traffic signal will be, the plan is to modify this existing traffic signal, so the trucks can come in and out in a signalized intersection.
All right. Thank you. Item number five presented by ASOF Filgman, representing Churchwick Partners LLC, CWP Montgomery LLC, requesting to rezone one lot located on the north end of Hillmark Court from a R65M multifamily residential zoning district to a B3 commercial zoning district.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Aldridge, and I'm here representing the CWP. Our request is just to rezone back to the multifamily, or from multifamily dwellings back into the B3 commercial district, the way that it was actually assigned before.
What is the brand, what is the brand of the extended stay?
Sinesta ES Suites.
Sinesta?
Are there any further questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
One. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number six presented by Flowers &amp; White Engineering, representing Dennis Pandear, subject, excuse me, requests final approval for Georgiana Convenience Plat 1, located on the west side of Eastern Boulevard, approximately 1700 feet south of Vaughn Road, in a B3 commercial zoning district.
Good evening, Brad Flowers, Flowers &amp; White Engineering. The subject property that we're looking at today is on the west side of the bypass, just south of the Honda and Accurate Dealership, just north of the Subaru Dealership. It's vacant land right now, with some woods on the north side. What we've got, the owner of the property has the potential for a sale of the overall parcel, and in doing so, they needed to parcel out the billboard that is already there. That was previously approved. It never was separated from the property. And so what they're doing right here is creating two lots, one for the overall, so they can go through with the sale a little bit easier with the legal stuff, and then separating Lot 2, I believe it is, where the billboard is currently.
Is there any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from?
This joint we have, it doesn't show two lots. Oh, I think it's got a very small one.
Yeah, it is. It's just a billboard lot.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you. Item number seven presented by Flowers &amp; White Engineering, representing D.R. Horton, requests final approval of Brentwood Square Plat Number 1, located on the west side of Taylor Road, across from Park Crossing, in a PUD planned unit development zoning district.
Again, Brad Flowers, Flowers &amp; White. What we've got here is residential plat, final plat request for Brentwood Square, Plat Number 1. This PUD went through y'all several months back. The plans are about 85% complete. They're working through some minor modifications on the plans with Waterworks, I believe it is, and those will be backed out before you got the plans out, the bid, contractors. But our, our practice typically is, once we get close, to go ahead and get that final approval. Obviously, the plat will not be recorded until staff signs off or approves everything on that end, from the engineering and Waterworks, and all the approvals are done after construction is completed. But we want to get the final plat approval.
Any question?
Where's the, are you still going to put an amenities center in there?
To be 100% honest with you, this is my partner's project, and I do not know the detail of what all he's got on that. Tanya, do you remember what he's got on this one?
I think he had it on that.
It's, it's further south in another phase. It's not in this phase.
Okay.
I know it's included in the PUD, but I don't know exactly where.
It's further south.
Okay. The last time, when you were here before, I don't know if it was you or not, but that was a question that came up that I asked about connecting, and I see that you guys went back and connected one section to the other section.
Correct.
And, and I appreciate that. I just didn't know where the amenities center is going to be now.
I don't know where he's got that located. I know it's on the project, but I don't know where it's located on this.
Because of that connection, it will get you to the amenities center.
And, and that's what I was appreciating. I was thanking him for doing that.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Yeah. It just seems strange that they've named it Brentwood, since we already have a Brentwood neighborhood in Montgomery. I know it's Brentwood Square, but still, must have been somebody from out of town named it.
I have no idea.
Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight presented by Larry Speaks &amp; Associates, representing Alabama State University, requests final approval of ASU Plat Number 1, located in the northeast corner of Forest Avenue and West Fifth Street, in a B2 commercial, O1 office, and R60S single-family residential zoning districts.
Hi, I'm Paul McLendon with Larry Speaks &amp; Associates, and on behalf of Alabama State University, we are requesting plat approval for a 2.83 acre parcel. We're replating multiple residential lots, as well as some current right, public right-of-way that's to be vacated. We're looking to plan it in one single lot.
What's going, what's going there?
It will be, the university is looking to put student apartments on the property.
Will that be exclusive, will that be exclusive students?
As far as my understanding.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine presented by Larry E. Speaks &amp; Associates, representing Browder Vanier Works, Inc., public hearing for a development plan for a new structure to be located on the northwest corner of North McDonough Street and Coil Street, in a M3 general industrial zoning district.
Yes, I'm Greg Gillen with Larry Speaks &amp; Associates, and Browder Vanier Works has an existing business on the very north end of McDonough Street, before it runs into the railroad track. And they've been operating for a long time, and now they're trying to expand their operation into a small sawmill that's on the opposite side of McDonough Street, just north of Coral. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? A public hearing's been held. Thank you. Item number 10 presented by Larry E. Speaks &amp; Associates, representing Faulkner University, public hearing for a development plan for new parking lots and concourse to be located at 5345 Atlanta Highway, in a INST industrial and M1 light industry zoning district.
William Speaks with Larry Speaks &amp; Associates. This project will include two new parking lots on the east side of campus, adjacent to where Spirit Ditch, as well as a concourse that is intended to connect the campus to the new Health Sciences Building and the bridge that was recently constructed. There will be no new structures or buildings as part of this project.
When are you going to open the bridge?
Soon, once they get the concourse open. I think people are walking over it now, but there's some gravel.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions or concerns from the audience? Public hearing's been held. Thank you. Item number 11 presented by Pilgrim &amp; Bostic Engineers, representing Circle M Holdings LLC, requesting final approval of Circle M Holdings Plat Number 1, located on the south side of West Fairview Avenue, approximately 230 feet west of Mobile Drive, in a M1 light industrial zoning district.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bostick with Pilgrim &amp; Bostic Engineering. This plat is related to the next item. This plat is related to the next item on the agenda, which is a development plan. As part of the development plan, we're required to plat this lot, which had not been previously
There any questions from the planning commission?
Craig, how much, how much, how much space gonna be from where they wanna put that new structure to that elementary school right there? Is that the elementary school gonna be bagged up directly to where they wanna put that structure?
I can show you real quick on that picture. All this new structure is, is if you look right there at the end of the existing structure, they're adding on, I think it's forty feet. I'll verify real quick in the package. It'll be covered in the next item.
So basically, they're not going, no, no more depth?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay, okay. Cause I know I didn't, that wouldn't be right with those kids out there, and they moving floor to that elementary school.
Oh, no, they just need more storage for that building.
Any further questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? Motions in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item number twelve, presented by Pilgrim and Bostic Engineers, representing industrial equipment and supply, public hearing for a development plan for an addition to a building located at 2325 West Fairview Avenue in a M1 light industrial zoning district.
This is the, the development plan we were just discussing for the plat, and it shows the addition to the building that will provide storage for their fabrication system.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? A public hearings been held. Thank you.
I've got two more items.
Item number thirteen, presented by Pilgrim and Bostic Engineers, representing Two LR Property Holdings LLC, request final approval of Alabama Vascular Specialists Plat number one located on the north side of Woodmere Boulevard approximately four hundred feet west of Central Parkway in a O1 office zoning district.
Yes, this is Chris Bostic again. This plat is being presented, we intended to have the development plan submitted at the same time, but it will be submitted at the next planning mission for Alabama Vascular Specialists, but this is just the plat. Again, the lot has been platted, and we intended it to be at the same time, but the plans will be, the plan will be at the next meeting.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? Motions in order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, presented by Pilgrim and Bostic Engineers, representing Dennis Pandear, public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located on the north side of Hyundai Boulevard approximately eleven hundred feet west of Norman Bridge Road in a M3 general industry zoning district.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions or concerns from the audience? A public hearing's been held. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item number fifteen, presented by Department of Planning, representing City of Montgomery, request recommendation for approval for, of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add regulations for solar energy collection facilities.
Does anybody have a copy of the conference call? Good afternoon, planning commission members. I'm Robert Smith. I'm city planning director here at the City of Montgomery, and this is request for recommendation for the approval of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add regulations for solar energy collection facilities. And you've got a copy of the actual ordinance, and what I've got is a short presentation that will take you through, that goes over this ordinance in particular. The first slide, ordinance purpose. The ordinance purpose is to have specific standards that regulate and control solar energy collection facilities in certain land use locations within the city of Montgomery city limits and the city planning jurisdiction, which is also referred to as the PJ. Second slide, some general definitions, specific definitions. We've got both large-scale solar collection energy facility and small-scale solar energy collection facility. The definition of large-scale solar collection, solar energy collection facility means a principal use on a site that consists of a facility with solar panels, modules, and related equipment, also known as heat exchanger, exchanger, pipes, inverters, wiring, and storage that collects solar radiation and transfers it as heat to, that carry the fluid for the use of water heating over space heating and cooling, or that collects solar energy and converts it into electricity. A large-scale solar energy collection system is designed to meet demands for a large area. It's typically mounted on the ground and is connected to the, to an electrical distribution grid system. Again, that's large-scale solar energy collection facility, also known as a solar farm. If you, I don't know if you've heard or have seen, we have had two particular solar farms actually proposed, one within the city limits, one just outside the city limits in the PJ. One near the airport, and the other one is just south of the Hyundai plant. Both of those were approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. The second definition is a small-scale solar energy collection facility, which this means equipment for the collection of solar energy or its conversion to electrical energy for use on the same property or for incidental sale to a public utility when that equipment is accessory to a principal use of the property. Components are typically mounted on the roofs of principal or accessory structures, but may be mounted on other parts of structures or on the ground. So this is basically, if you've seen, and I know you haven't seen very many here in the city of Montgomery, if any at all, but when you go to other cities like Florida in particular, you see solar panels on how, on people's homes, on houses, those are, those are the types of solar, solar panels that we're talking about in terms of small-scale solar energy collection facility. Next slide. Zoning districts where solar will be allowed. We're proposing to allow large-scale solar collection facilities. This, these would be allowed on the appeal to the Board of Zoning Adjustment as a special exception only in the following zoning districts, Agricultural 1, Agricultural 2, M1, M2, and M3, with the Board of Zoning Appeals approval. It has to be approved. It is not automatically, it has to go to them for them to consider it for approval. And it's prohibited in all other zoning districts. So large-scale is only allowed in these specified districts only, and it's, it would be prohibited in all other districts. Yes, sir.
When does that board meet? I've never heard of it.
The Board of Adjustment.
Board of Appeal.
Yes, so, so the Board of, the Board of Zoning Adjustment actually considers the appeal for a special exception for various items, but this particular item would be sent to the Board of Zoning Adjustment on, on an appeal if, if, if a petitioner applied for it, similar to what petitioners do when they apply to you all.
Why don't this say Board of Adjustments then?
Why doesn't it say, well, it says Board of Zoning Appeals in the presentation, but it's the same thing, Board of Adjustment.
Why don't it say that?
Well, I can, I can make that edit so that it says that, if that makes you feel better.
Yeah, I'd be feeling better too, cause I, that was my big question.
I'm very familiar with Board of Adjustments.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. It, it, gotcha, gotcha. We just said it was only appeals, but yeah, it is the Board of Zoning Adjustment or Board of Adjustment, multiple, multiple names.
I thought we had a new, a new, new group of people.
No, no, no new group of people.
That's all y'all needed.
Board of Adjustment, yes, sir. Small-scale solar collection facility would be permitted by right in all districts as an accessory use to a principal use on a site. Next slide. Use specific standards for large-scale solar energy collection facilities. Again, the intent is to minimize negative impacts on neighboring property owners, to ensure the use, ensure proper decommissioning of a site. So ensuring what that means, ensuring the proper decommissioning of a site, let's say a solar farm goes out of business, then there, there needs to be the proper decommissioning of that particular site if it goes out of business for whatever reason. Standards, the maximum size is one thousand acres. Next, all equipment set back seventy-five feet from the edge of a site, except equipment that generates noise, set back, that will be required, set back of two hundred feet. Own-site utilities placed underground. Next to last, last point, enhance the landscape buffer to shield site from view, installing the coordinates with standards of the zoning ordinance, and last, to ensure site is restored to current state when it reaches the end of the life. Advocate required to provide city a financial guarantee to ensure decommissioning equal to one hundred and fifty percent of the estimated cost to decommission.
Rob, how did y'all decide on the thousand acres?
The thousand acres is, is the standard practice for solar farms across the country. You know, Alabama, Mississippi are kind of the last states to come on board, but that is a standard practice across the country.
What else is new, huh?
Right.
All right, but it is thousand. I didn't realize it was that much. And I do wanna make a comment here, brag on y'all.
You gonna brag on us?
Yeah. Who, who, who was involved in all of this, determine, I mean, the language in this?
So the language, we've gotten help, as you know, we've got a zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations update going on. We've gotten major assistance from our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations consultant, which they're doing this all over the country.
Well, I'm telling you what, this is, this is exactly what's needed.
Yes, yes.
Really and truly.
It is, it is.
I was very, very pleased and also very impressed. Not that that matters to anybody but me, but.
I think it matters.
But it, I, I just thought it was a very good job.
Spot on. Yes, sir. We think it's a very good job, and it's needed, especially at these times when solar farming is, it's not new, but it's new to Alabama, new to the southeast, and we just gotta come in line with the rest of the country that actually has solar farming going on, and it's not a, it's something we wanna encourage more of.
The biggest issue though, each time I've been involved in one of these, you know, conversations, has been, okay, it's great now, but what happens twenty years from now? You know?
Correct. Which is where the decommissioning requirements will come in.
Exactly, and that's what was so, so great in your I-thon.
Yes, sir.
Does that cover the land also? In other words, you have a storm that comes in, or tornado, or whatever, and the glass flying everywhere, you know, it's got to be, it's, you got all this paraphernalia in the, in the ground.
The solar panels and other infrastructure.
Does that terminology cover taking care of, of?
It does, it does. And all of the solar farm developers required to have insurance, and in the event of, you know, bad weather event, tornado, hurricane, bad winds, if something happens, they gotta clean that up.
Who's the policy made out to, who, who, who's, is it made, the policy on that, you said it had insurance on it?
Correct.
So I, I mean, I guess that's cat, you know?
The individual companies.
Yeah.
And they have to submit that to the city.
I didn't know if there was a national organization that was now, you know, like FEMA, you know?
Correct.
You know, is that, is it, is there an organization like that that for?
He's basically asking, is the insurance company, the, the insurance through a private company, or is it through?
Oh, private company.
Private company.
Yes, sir, private company. Not, not necessarily FEMA, no.
Well, obviously it's not FEMA, but I, FEMA like, you know, at some point, I would think that's probably gonna be where we're headed.
We shall see.
Well, that's right. You may see, I may not.
Don't, don't count yourself out. You've been around here for a long time, and you're still here, so.
I was gonna, I was gonna make the point that a, that a buddy had about the decommissioning issue. I think that was a great, great point to make, great issue to cover.
Yes, sir. Decommissioning is a, it is a standard requirement.
It'd be restored to a position.
Yeah, I just, I just think y'all did a good job on it, so.
Thank you, sir. The following standards, again, use specific, we talked about, A, the system shall comply with the maximum height standards for zoning district in which it's located, subject to the additional height permitted in subsection B. A small-scale solar collection facility may be located on the roof of an existing structure irrespective of applicable height standards, provided the system extends no more than five feet above, above the roof surface. And lastly, the property owner shall be responsible for negotiating with other property owners in the vicinity to establish any solar easement designed to protect solar access for the small-scale solar energy collection facility, and recording any such solar easement, easement with the Montgomery County Probate Judge's office.
Now, put that in common language for some people like me. Tell me what you just got ready through saying.
So again, these are, they're use specific standards for small-scale solar collection facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that basically say, I mean, everything from the maximum height standards for, for each zoning district, where it is to be located, which is typically on, on the roof, and then, as it says, that last one, property owners gotta be responsible for negotiating with other property owners.
All right, what is that, what, what is the, explain how that's gonna work, working with other owners, and what, what are they, what are they working on? I mean, I understand, I understand what you're working on, but.
They may need an easement for some part of that facility, and they would work out that and then get it recorded in the.
What kind of easement would be, would be needed?
I mean, it could be an easement for, could be like roadway access, any, any number of different types of easement.
I guess I'm in visualizing as a residential unit, you know, on a, on a home in a residential area. I can't ima, what, if, if I had my own, on my own, in my, on my own house, what easement?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need an easement for that.
Right, right. But are we talking about getting to where you've got solar panels in your backyard?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, that may be the best location in your backyard or on your, on your rooftop. It could be either location.
Folks in California have had solar panels on their homes. I know a whole street of folk.
Right.
My sister just installed in Philadelphia. My sister just installed in Philadelphia. I mean, it's, it's really modern day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And are you finding, in your research or whatever, these new developments in their covenant saying you can't have a panel on the front of the house? There's some restrictions for other stuff on the front.
Right, so far, we, we have not seen that. I can kind of see that, Warren and I talked about that particularly in the historic districts, where that might be an issue. But again, it's brand new to us and we'll have to tackle it when we.
Where the sunshine has, determines where the panel needs to be to be effective.
And that would be the number-one dictating factor on where, where solar panels would actually be on a, on a particular residential piece of property.
One, one other, one other question, Robert, is that if a HOA presently have an exception to that, is there, is there any way that the homeowner can go through the city? And are, are willing, will the HOA be the found word on that particular home? Can, basically, can the homeowner appeal it to the city if the HOA specifically forbids that?
I don't think so.
I, I, I don't think so either, but, but just in case somebody, you know, it comes up. I think the HOA is gonna have the found word on it in that particular neighborhood. And, and the city could have all the regulations they want, but the HOA is gonna have the found word in that particular neighborhood.
Right.
Certainly, coming, coming here from Florida, Florida's pretty much solar panels are allowed by right, and that came from the, the state. And I think we need to check that for, for Alabama, because that's what can cause some problems. Because if, if you're allowed them by right, there's very little sort of enforcement that anybody can do. So, maybe we want to check if there's any by-right allowability for panels. And if there's not, then it probably gives us a lot more sort of enforcement power at the moment. But still understanding that for them to be effective, they obviously have to face a, a certain way. So, in some cases, it's just a matter of trying to limit the visual impact as opposed to removing it altogether.
Yeah, right. So, so again, as, as page number four, slide four says that, I mean, these would be permitted by right in all districts. So, that, that is our intention, for it to be permitted by right if somebody wants solar panels on their homes.
But the, what I thought I heard earlier was that the homeowners' association is the final say-so, right?
Well, that's what we're discussing now, is it by right?
Okay.
Not, not, not if it's by right. Typically, by right means that you can, you are allowed to have that on your house. It's just a matter of determining what is the best location, whether that's in the front, side, or the back.
Have the items that were in, I was out of my league when you were, when we were discussing. There were several things on TV about people in South Montgomery County, which I'm assuming that still is in your jurisdiction, right?
Yes, sir, for, for the locations that are in the planning jurisdiction, yes. And we, we actually dealt with a large-scale solar facility project proposal at last, last week's Board of Adjustment meeting, in, in which they actually approved that.
Right, and have the homeowners or the property owners around there been satisfied? I guess that's my question, are there still questions?
I, I think that there are still some questions, but they, the Board of Adjustment required them to go and have a meeting with the homeowners, and they came to as best of agreement as they possibly could to rectify the issues. But, but yeah, I mean, not everybody got everything that they wanted, but they did meet and they, they came back with a list of items that they, that they changed or agreed on, or, or, or that, that they could, they did the best that they possibly could.
But that's only in the city limits of the PJ.
Correct.
County don't have any zoning ordinance.
The county does not have zoning or land regulatory law at all. You can do whatever you want to do in the county.
Any further questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience?
My name is Kim Klein, K-I-M-C-L-I-N-E, eighty-three sixty Mobile Highway in Hope Hall. And I am in what they are now referring to as the planning jurisdiction. It very conveniently went from police jurisdiction to planning jurisdiction when they decided they weren't gonna give us any police or fire protection in our area. So, now it's the PJ. We have met numerous times, as he mentioned, with Silicon Ranch, who is the one that got its approval from the Board of Adjustments the other night. There was nowhere close to being anything mentioned in this document right here that we discussed and had approved by Silicon Ranch. This young lady that's over here is one of the city attorneys, and she's well aware of the things that we agreed on and that we disagreed on. Everything that we agreed on has been conveniently dropped from this document. Let's see here, and let's, let's just say, this is gonna be the precedent for forty-two hundred acres that are coming up to be developed. Four thousand two hundred acres that are presently under contract within Montgomery County for solar panels. Four thousand two hundred acres, okay? The proposed ordinance that we have here mentions the cleanup of the actual solar site. Conveniently, it doesn't say anything about their insurance. Correcting any tornado damage or wind damage where their solar panels are taken and it's actually hazardous material, where their stuff has been taken to other people's property. The Saturday after Christmas, a tornado came through Hope Hall. It went across the proposed area where Silicon Ranch would have been. It tore up stuff over on the Meta property, and that would have hit their property and thrown solar panels all over the Meta property. So, there is no mention whatsoever of them clearing or cleaning up anything other than their actual property that they own and have their solar panels on. There's no mention in the proposed document for any soil and water testing before the project, during the project, or after the project. There's no mention of any wildlife studies, protected wildlife, their habitats. And there are presently two projects right now where the habitats have just been completely wiped off the, the map. And I will tell you, it is the Mana Facility, which was bulldozed and got Candy Creek, and then the Meta Facility got Candy Creek, and that had protected wildlife on it. But no mention of it, it's easier to get, uh, easier to get, to be able to have somebody give you permission to do it later after it's already been done. Uh, let's see. No mention of any fire protection, no mention of any toxic release of chemicals into the air from the burning or damaged panels, and it's all been discussed. It's all been discussed very well. And they will tell you that the city has agreed to come out and provide fire protection to these solar panels. No, they haven't. They have not at all. We have very limited fire protection out in our area. It's all done through volunteer fire departments. They have not been trained. They will tell you that they've been trained. If you think you can fight a fire by looking at a YouTube video, that's exactly what they've done and called it training. That's not right. The city has been shown a YouTube video as to how to fight a fire at a solar farm. And now they want to show that same YouTube video to the volunteer fire departments out in Pinlala, in Snowden, in Raymer, and all these other places. What you decide that you're gonna sign off on, on this particular thing is gonna be the precedent pretty much for entire Montgomery County. If you set, if you have setbacks that you approve, they will probably be received and used in other facilities that are set up down the road, like the ones in Raymer that are going in right now. But if you do a seventy-five-foot setback, that's not much farther than from here to that corner over there. We had talked with Silicon Ranch, and we had gotten, I think, five hundred feet from the peak of a residence back to where they can have their first panel, and that is somewhat acceptable. It's not the standard. A few minutes ago, you stopped, talked about the standard of it being a thousand acres as the acceptable standard. Why are we not getting the acceptable standards that the EPA has set up in many cases for these setbacks? We're not talking about people that just grab some random number out of the air. It's documented stuff and what needs to be done. And they are, I mean, we're falling on deaf ears, is what it amounts to. They are not following through with any of the things that we tried to give them.
Who is they?
This is the planning commission, this is the city attorneys. The Board of Adjustments went ahead and approved it the other night, just because they had to go ahead and move on with it. So, anyway, all I'm, I'm begging you, please do not vote on this until we are able to get them to agree to some type of setbacks, some type of water and soil testing, things that they have to do, because it's our drinking water, it's our farms, it's the, the streams that are running down through our pasture that are feeding our cow, or watering our cows. You know, down in Pinlala, my brother's been hunting down there recently, and where the Pinlala Creek has runoff from Black Bear, I can't guarantee you that that's what it is. You got deer down there that have one antler here and four over here. Something is causing that, and it's not all genetic. But there's runoff that can affect the wildlife, it can poison them, it can poison cows, it can poison horses. And folks, I'm begging you, we've been, we've had deaf ears turn to us, both sides of this table here. And all I can do is just say, I'm, I'm begging you. All of the community of Hope Hall is begging you. All the community of Snowden is begging you. Raymer is begging you. Set some decent guidelines for us to follow and for them to follow, without us having to go before y'all every single time and say, look, you know, here comes next era, they're gonna demand the exact same lenient things that he's proposing right now, and, and it's gonna mess us all up. We've got subdivisions down there, a single street. If they've got seventy-five-foot setbacks, you're gonna have people with solar panels that are probably thirty feet off their properly dotted, property line. So, it's, it's, it's more than we can bear right now. I thank you for your time.
I have a question before you sit down right here. Are you against the ordinance or are you against solar energy collecting?
I am against the ordinance. We are not against solar energy collection, but we do want to be good partners. Want them to be good partners in the community. We're not against it completely, no. But we need some different setbacks, and we need some regulation more than what he's proposing right now. He's, he's opening the gate for him right now with this, with this ordinance.
Robert, what's your response? I mean, this, what he's talking about is exactly what I, why I was complimenting, because there was no, nobody had, had defined all this stuff. And I think what he's, what I'm hearing him say is, you know, we hadn't even reached the, the, the point that we have really got control, 'cause there is, there is a lot of stuff that could go wrong and helpless.
Yes, sir. Well, just, just to give you all a little, little history, there was a group that filed an injunction in court to stop the most recent one that got approved. And if I'm correct, Carolyn, what did the judge say about that lawsuit with a lot of the issues that he was talking about?
The judge denied their motion for preliminary injunction and allowed the city to move forward.
So, that, so, and, and that was, that's without these requirements right here that are, they're not, they're not minimal, they are very strict requirements, whereas we have none right, right now. But, but the most recent one that was approved last week and the one before actually meets all of these requirements that are actually in the ordinance that is actually before you right now. As far as the other stuff about the, the deer with three antlers on one side and one antler on the other, that, that really sounds like an immature deer to me, more so than a deer that has an issue ba, based on some runoff or chemical or something like that coming from solar panels. We have not seen any actual proof that solar panels harm the environment. The last developer that was approved last week had a team of different experts that actually worked with the company, and one in particular was an environmental scientist. And, and they are spot on with everything that they're doing. They will follow all of the EPA requirements. There are a lot of different permits that they would have to, actually have to get from multiple agencies in addition to our requirements before they are allowed to actually get started on any one particular project. And so, I don't want to disagree with them to be disagreeable, but a lot of that information is just not, not true. As far as the nearest house or property to the most recent one, yeah, the, the setback is, is seventy-five foot on one side and, and two hundred fifty on another. That's just on the property line, but the nearest house to this particular one last week is nearly three thousand feet, three thousand feet away from the actual solar farm property on the, on the west property line, which is, which is a very, very long distance away.
But that's just that one example. In the future, there's gonna be other farms come up.
Yes, sir, there will.
The setbacks really upset me. And the testing of the soil before they do any development, the runoffs and all that, that concerns me. All of it concerns me.
Again, all of that information.
Why don't you delay this, why don't you delay this or postpone this? And put something in, it's got some teeth.
If, if I may interject a moment, me over here. Okay, so, part of the, the thing with the current plan with Silicon is they've already agreed to test the soil before, during, and after. In regards to all the other regulations that the parties submitted as a suggestion to this, the city does not have any authority, power, or duty to handle any of the regulations they want. The regulations they want are state and federal. We have no authority to make any decision on those. The only authority we have is to do zoning. In regards to the setbacks, yeah, we can have a setback, but it still has to go in front of the Board of Adjustments. They're gonna hear anybody who wants to talk about it, and they can make a special exception and add conditions to it, such as they did with Silicon, saying, okay, any solar panel has to be five hundred and fifty feet away. So, that was a compromise, 'cause the individuals wanted six hundred and sixty.
And they, and they compromised at five fifty, which, in which they said was gracious planning. That was the Board of Adjustment.
That's just for that one farm, though. I'm talking about put some teeth in the word for any future farm.
But even, even with the zoning ordinance, it still has to go in front of the Board of Adjustments. And the Board of Adjustments will listen to everything, just like you guys do, and they can set any condition they want as part of approving that special exception.
They can actually make the setback further if they want to, based on what's going on at that particular location. This is just a standard, that is a national standard for setbacks from, from property lines.
Well, what is the county and the, and the state and the national say about setbacks?
Well, state and federal technically do not have the zoning authority. That is the individual municipalities.
But I mean, if that's what we gotta rely on, that, that's.
I mean, this, what you, what you have right here.
What we're saying is we don't have any.
Right, what you have here in the ordinance is the standard nationally.
But there is no. But there is no standard nationally.
Well, I mean, when I, when, when, when I say nationally, I'm talking about individual governments across the country. Cities and counties.
That's what folks are doing is what we're saying.
Correct, yes, sir.
Uh, let me, let me go back on one, one question i- in, in reference to what, what you, what you mentioned. Um, you know, if I understand correctly, um, if, if my tree falls down across your fence and, uh, it falls in your backyard, it's the person's, uh, problem where it fell, not whose tree fell, okay?
Correct.
Uh, is that, is that, is that the case? 'Cause that's exactly what's happened. Yes, ma'am.
I might need to check that. I know my experience is if it's your land and your tree falls in your neighbor, you're responsi- if it damaged any of your neighbor property, you're responsible to fix that.
Okay.
Which the, the solar company has already said to the petitioners in the current case.
I had that happen.
Right.
And they, their insurance was not, you know, you let the two insurance companies dog and when you get through, neither one of them wanna do anything. And so now it's back, it, it just sits.
Right.
And that's what concerns me about, about what this gentleman said. All of a sudden, you've got something, a tornado that comes across and throws all this glass around and whatever else it's got.
Yes, sir.
And there is no responsibility.
Right. That, that scenario came up at the board of adjustment and the solar, the solar farm developer said that they would be the ones responsible for cleaning up any solar panels that leave their property and go to another property owner's property. They would be the ones responsible for that.
This is exactly what I think, I think you're talking about is.
That's that one instance.
That, I think we need, don't you need that in part of this? I mean, this is, this is great because we had anything.
Right.
That's why I was bragging on it, 'cause these are the kind, these cover some of the problems. But if there's, that's not, if I came along today and wanted to put one, uh, in Crankton Bow, okay? Um, and, and was allowed to do so, I, I have no ties whatsoever to a standard that, 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 that was just set. Am I, is that true?
I do believe that would be more of a, a procedure and not a zoning. Zoning is land use. How is the land to be used? Not preparing for if any damage happened. That's more of an afterthought in regards to zoning.
Well, well spoken from the legal side, uh, because there is a lot of money made every day for unplanned events that, uh, uh, that, that happen. And it doesn't matter whether you're right or wrong, it, it's how much money you got to be able to afford to. I think Trump's proven that is a good example. And that's what, uh, that's, that's the kinda thing. But I'm not here to say, don't do anything. I just, like Cruz said, I, if we're finding out things as we're sitting here talking, shouldn't we be thinking about adding some of those? I mean, 'cause I know you agree with, with, with.
I don't, I don't totally disagree with that.
Yeah. I mean, with, with, with what the gentleman said, it's, it's, I know you're fighting that side too, okay? I understand that, but.
That's been, that's already been decided in court.
Okay. Well, you know how that works too.
I do know how that works.
You can, you can, you can work that on up the chain too.
Yes, sir.
All right. So what do you want us to do?
Yes, sir. We, we, we would love to have your, um, unanimous approval on this, uh, ordinance in which we have nothing right now.
May I say something? Uh, this ordinance that's before us is the beginning of, to clarify the whole, uh, uh, solar thing that's coming to our, coming to our, the solar collection coming to our city. We might not have every single thing covered, but this is just the beginning. I mean, if, if they have to go back and add amendments or something like that, I mean, it can be done. But this is just the beginning. I don't think we should vote this down because everything is not covered. I mean, this is just the beginning and, uh, I, this is the beginning is, is really all I can say, you know?
It's like any beginning.
It's just like any beginning. You know, when, uh, electric power came up, you know, everything wasn't covered. Suppose a transformer fall out and, and land in my yard or something like that. It's the beginning and, and, and I think that's the way we should look at this as the beginning of an ordinance to cover solar energy facilities coming to the city of Montgomery.
And these things will change, is that?
Who's gonna call for it to be amended later?
When issues come up, but be- because we can't think of everything right now.
Or, or national standards change with the way that it's going across the country.
He wants to speak. While he's coming up, I'd like an understanding of a tree falls on my property and it's a live tree and it damages something in my yard, do I pay for that or does, or does the person? Call your insurance folks.
Yeah, call your insurance.
Call, call. And what if the insurance had been canceled? What if the insurance? Well, then you don't want it. Well, I understand that, but do I have to pay that?
We're digressing.
Well, that's what I thought. I thought I was the one responsible. Educate, we're educating.
Well, that's true too, but.
I mean, I'd like to get an understanding from the attorney since we just have debated and decided who's responsible on a solar panel, who's responsible on a tree. Let's get back to the simple thing. I mean, the attorney just said that if it falls on my yard, that the person that the tree fell from is responsible. Is that the way it is? I'm well aware of that.
It used to be that way. It used to be that way, but.
But she said, she says it's responsible of the, of the person that the tree fell from.
There are circumstances and everything, but that's not genuine.
That's the way I understand it, Ms. Attorney. I just went through it, I'll tell you that. Who is responsible? The other party, if it fell in my yard. Okay, I'll talk to my insurance company the next time my tree falls in somebody's yard.
It's very easy and she, she will be able to say that she witnessed it as well. Judge Gaines was not even certain that he had jurisdiction over this case. He had no idea if he could even rule on it. So based on that, it could have been that he denied our injunction, our temporary injunction. And then it's easy to throw that up at the BOA meeting. Well, they, they, they didn't win their injunction, so we gotta vote on it. All of the truth has not come out yet. And also all of the standards that he's talking about, why won't they agree to it? They said they'd do that. We're talking about unicorns and rainbows and they're not putting any media to this as far as who's responsible. Put it on paper, who's responsible for this. Put it on paper as to we're gonna get you to do soil and water testing. Put that timeframe down there. Put it on paper about who's responsible for all these different things and that they have to contact Fish and Wildlife or they have to contact the EPA. They have to contact these people rather than just putting it up there for them to say, well, we didn't know. Or, well, here we go. Yeah, we, we agree, we'll do it. But it's not always the case. I look at that right now at the manna and the bed of property right now that they ran out through their bulldozers before they did anything to contact anybody about any wetlands, anything at all. Nothing. They put up these different pictures on these things about all these runoff and retention ponds. Then we'll see. Nothing's been put down permanently on paper. So we're just supposed to agree with it and say, yeah, here we go, y'all do your thing. So I'm begging you, don't approve it until we get some more stuff put in it. Stuff that will be more restrictive and demanding of these companies when they come in here. Instead of us having to say, okay, just open the gate, y'all come on in, come on in. We, we don't mind solar. We just want somebody to put down on paper the restrictions and things that need to be done to make it where they can work within the community. We had one of the young ladies from Silicon Ranch that got up and said, we just wanna be good neighbors. We want to be good neighbors, which is fine. That's what we want too. But being a good neighbor might, might be something different from them than it will be from the next project that comes. That's why it's gotta be put on paper. Thank you.
Okay. I'm glad I had a chance to look at this. It, it's not on the presentation, but go to page three in the actual ordinance itself. Page number three, and it's gonna be, going to be under F. Hey, hey, Mike, will you switch to the actual ordinance document on page number three? Yes, sir, the Word document. Go to page number three.
Yeah, it's on the monitor. It's on the monitor. Look on your monitor. Look on your computer.
Uh, scroll down a little more. So right here under F, you should have it on your hard copy, right here. And you can, if you wanna highlight that. It says that the application for a special exception shall include a cleanup plan in the event of a natural disaster such as a tornado or, or hurricane. Details of how damaged solar panels that need to be replaced are disposed of and a decommissioning plan that describes the timeline and manner in which the facility will be decommissioned and provides that site will be restored to a condition similar to its condition prior to the establishment of the solar farm use. So that, so that, that, that is, they have to have a cleanup plan in the event of a natural disaster that, let's say, a, a tornado or hurricane or something like that comes through. Like he mentioned, the, the tornado that hit a couple of weeks ago, um, they would have to ha- whereas right now, this ordinance is not in place and it wouldn't, wouldn't require anything. But again, the reason we're putting this in place is to have a requirement that requires a cleanup plan in the event of a natural disaster such as a tornado or hurricane. So that will clean up those solar panels that are strewn everywhere from the hurricane, the high winds that come through and push that stuff from the solar farm property to somebody else's individual property.
I wish it didn't say similar.
Wish it wouldn't say similar. Oh, to a condition similar to the, well, I mean, what, what, what that, what that basically is saying, that's in reference to the decommissioning. And let's say it goes out of business for whatever reason. They are to restore it to look like, let's just say, farmland property that it looked like before they put the solar farm there. That's, that's what that means. That's what similar means in that regard. It's a what?
Do the ones that we have approved follow and, and have that? Do they have that application in their, uh, in their agreement that we, with, with the city and the?
So, so basically what they have agreed, I'm, I'm sorry, that's really loud. Um, again, we didn't have this ordinance in place.
I understand.
But they agreed verbally to the board of zoning adjustment, which can be taken to court if they don't follow what they say that they're gonna do. And which, which is the reason why we're putting it in writing for anything new coming forward. Now, now this doesn't impact the ones that are already, that have already been approved and, and that have come before you with the site development plan, um, or they, they've been approved at the board of zoning adjustment. But anything new, these requirements would, uh.
Would they go back, could you go back to them and make, and, and, and make that part of it? Or at a request, if they make that part of their, uh, agreement?
No, we, we, we can't, we can't go back to them and make them do anything because there was no, because there was no requirement in place. But, but they have agreed to do that on the record, standing right here.
Okay, so, so let me make sure I'm understanding what you just said.
Yes, sir.
Paragraph F is, applies to these that, that we just got through doing or that we, that you've done, even though, because they agreed to do it.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
It's not, they're not required, but they, they have agreed to do that.
Yes.
Okay. So what's the difference in getting them to sign what you got here? And.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not retroactive.
No. Well, it is if they agree to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be if they agreed to it.
But that's what you just said, they agreed to it.
They, they, they agreed to it verbally as a part of their approval to the board of zo- to the board of adjustment.
Well, can't they, if they agreed to it verbally, can't they agree to it in, in writing?
In writing. I don't know that we can, I don't think we, we can't go back and make it about it.
No, but because they agreed to it during the hearing, it is part of the record and it's part of the condition of them getting the special exception approved. So they can't back out of it for nothing, even if we don't have a signed paper.
We still have it.
We, we have that. Now.
You got it without having it.
But, but that's only the, the current one that was in front of us, um, last week. I believe the other two solar farm, the other one. Yeah, that's already.
I mean, it's under construction.
Yeah, so they, they're not part of.
They're not a part of the ordinance.
We learn as we go.
Sometimes, yes.
Somebody get shot.
Sounded like it.
Time frame.
I think he wants to make another comment.
Okay, then we gotta wrap this thing up. But I'm, I'm, I'm glad the conversation drove me to, to remember that piece that's actually in there.
Well, I've got, my note is, good road.
He's still not mentioning setbacks though.
There you go.
All right, yes, sir. Yes, sir, what you?
I happen to have been in the courtroom with this young lady, so I know that she would have torn that thing all to pieces right there. First of all, it says, let's see, where is it? The facility will be decommissioned and provides that the site will be restored to a similar condition. Okay, the site, not the neighbor's site, our site. That's exactly what they were trying to do with Silicon Ranch. They didn't wanna be tied to anything that was outside of their fence line if any of their property ended up three and four miles away. Josh and Amanda on Channel Twelve talk all the time about, oh, the debris field, oh, we're watching the debris. Eh, eh, all this kinda stuff. And their stuff's gonna go all over the place. But that right there, and she'll tell you, she picked that apart in a courtroom like that. So until they put on there and that they will establish the property next to them and correct what was done to their property next to them, it's toothless. Absolutely toothless. So whatever you decide.
Robert, maybe you didn't put in there that it would apply to the others 'cause I don't know how far you can go. I mean, I don't know how far you can predict.
Well, because they said it on record that they would do it. They said they would go to the neighbor's properties and clean up the properties and clean up the mess. We can keep them to that.
They said they would clean up other properties?
Yes, they did.
Oh, yes, sir. Again, this is, this is in the event of a natural disaster.
Yeah, I see.
Something happened.
That project is not the one going to be, which this is directing. This is directing everything that's still.
Can you hear you?
This is directing everything that's still to come. Silicon Ranch is a done deal.
I understand that, but that's what we're talking about. You've got things in there is what she's saying, that, that we're trying to put in there now.
But they haven't. They brought this in front of you right now. They haven't put it in there. So if you approve it.
She just got.
I, I believe he's, he's misunderstanding the situation. So at the board of adjustment, they, they agreed to do that. So that's part of the special exception. That's a condition to their special exception that got approved. Now, you keep saying it's a done deal. It, all they got was that special exception. They haven't even been in front of the planning commission with any development plans, any plaids. So these guys still have to do their legislative duty and go through that process.
Then why would you be called upon to vote without it being a complete document?
This is an ordinance that's going forward. This is, this is simply an ordinance that's going. This is, this is simply an ordinance that's going forward.
It's not the project.
Okay, well, if, if you know that there are going to be things that'll be corrected, but you know when it's going to happen, it's after something's already screwed up and been done, then we're going to have to come back and say, oh, well, we, we'll put it in there from now on.
We can't predict everything that could, uh, uh, will happen within the next twenty years or something like that. We'll be stuck, we'll be stuck where we are right now with absolutely nothing. But, but we need some kind of ordinance to go forward, to move forward, and we could come back and amend it if something needs to be amended.
I don't think he's done his homework.
Okay.
I think he has.
All right. Uh, Robert, you ready for a vote, right? Motion's in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Six.
All those opposed?
Two motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I believe we need to vote on offices, correct?
Y'all want to do the elections?
Yes, ma'am. Do we have a motion for the chairperson?
Um, I, I would like to make a comment and then make a motion for.
Absolutely.
You know, in thinking about what we're, you know, what we've got here, uh, Tanya, do you know any other board that does what we've been doing for years? And that is VP, uh, vice goes to chair and, you know?
You're actually the only board that does that. All of our other boards are consistent.
So, so a lot of them are, or most of them that I know of, uh, you could have a chairman that's been there thirty years.
Our Board of Adjustment Chairman has.
I know he has.
It also allows him to run a meeting.
Having said what I just said and bringing that up, I think that we, we are doing it the right way. I think it's great to have people that are able to go, go to that chair, you know? And I know it's difficult for someone coming in to, to do that with that. Um, I think we ought to do the same thing we've been doing and, um, and I think Leslie would, uh, would be a great, uh, chair and I'd nominate her for the chair for this next year.
I'll second that.
All right, do we, motions in order and been made and seconded? All those in favor?
Motion passes.
Perfect. Uh, we need to get a nomination for the vice chair.
Uh, I'll, I'll nominate, uh, Cruz Reeves as vice chair.
I decline.
With that declining, um, I'd rec, I, I.
We could recommend our Garrett.
That's, that's where I was, once you do that, that's what I was going to.
I move Garrett Smith be the vice chair.
I, I accept. All those in favor?
Let me get seconded on that.
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor? All those opposed? And lastly, um, Executive Secretary?
All right, we need to really talk about this.
You're the only board that votes for the Executive Secretary because you always.
Listen, it's, I was going to, the only thing I'm going to do is recommend that, that Warren is, is that and how much I personally have enjoyed what you've done, uh, over the last couple of years in, in being involved in this.
Yeah, and I've, I've enjoyed being here, um, I've learned, I learned, learned a lot from all of you, so it's, it's appreciated. You're a very, very easy board to, um, work with and, um, enjoy being here.
We still got to do one thing, let's get you to learn some Southern peas. I can't understand half the time when you, when you, when you talk, but you've done a wonderful job and it's, it's nice to have you with us.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a second.
I move for, was there a motion already?
Yeah.
I, I second that and I like to. And, and I'd like to go on record, uh, agreeing with my colleague, buddy, that, that you've done a good job.
Thank you.
The communication is open, always open.
All those in favor, you try to call.
All those in favor? All right, all those opposed, thank you.
One more thing, make sure number two has not shown up.
Yeah.
Everybody for number two.
Item number two, give me just a second, please. Uh, is there anybody here for item number two presented by Recon Builders, uh, representing Recon Builders, a public hearing for a development plan for a new structure to be located at six thousand one Troy Highway in a B three commercial zoning district? Anybody present? Carrie's the next. All right, thank you all.